Yes.
Do you want to do this before we open? Before we open the meeting?
We're gonna do the oath of offices right now for the council members or the elected council members? We're gonna start with Logan because we always leave him at the last because his last name's Logan. So Logan, reverse it, will you? Okay. I, Logan Welch.
I, Logan Welch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
As member of the city council.
As a member of the city council.
For the four-year term.
For the four-year term.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
To December 31st, 2021.
To December 21st, 2021.
Thirty first.
Thirty first, 2021. That's important.
For the city of Webster City, Iowa.
For the city of Webster City, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As how? As now or hereafter required by law. Thank you.
All right, Matt.
I, Matt McKinney.
I, Matt McKinney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
As a member of the city council.
As a member of the city council.
For the four-year term.
For the four-year term.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
To December 31st, 2021.
To December 31st, 2021.
For the city of Webster City, Iowa.
For the city of Webster City, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
I, John Hawkins.
I, John Hawkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
As a member of the city council.
As a member of the city council.
For the four-year term.
For the four-year term.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
To December 31st, 2021.
To December 31st, 2021.
For the city of Webster City, Iowa.
For the city of Webster City, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Okay. We can now meet in the regular meeting. Call December 18, 2017, city council meeting to order. Your roll call.
John Hawkins.
Here.
Matt McKinney.
Here.
Brian Miller.
Here.
Jim Talbot.
Here.
Logan Welch.
Here.
Call for motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion approved. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section A, petitions, communications, and requests. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council may not take any action at this meeting. It may ask city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anyone have anything? Anyone have any? Public information?
I got a... There's a fundraiser for Nora Scott and we'll be shaving the officers' heads Wednesday at 6:00 at the fire station. So if anybody wants to come check that out, it should be entertaining.
Yeah. Okay. We'll go on to section B's minutes and claims. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or the member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it can be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have item one, minutes of December 4th, 2017. Resolution on payroll for the period ending December 9th, 2017, and paid on December 15th, 2017. And three is a resolution on bills and a funds list. Would you like to?
I move to approve collectively.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion approved. Items C is general agenda. Item one on the agenda is a report and recommendations from the Hotel Motel Tax Board on round 20 of the grant applications. Andy, did you?
Good evening. I'm Andy Sol, chairperson of the Hotel Motel Tax Board. Other members on our board is Kristen Williams, Kyle Swann, Kerry Holmes, our homes, Rojas, and Linda Conway couldn't make it tonight. The board received presentations on December 12, 2017, and met on December 14, 2017, to determine our recommendations on projects and funding level. The board made the following recommendations, and I'll go through kind of a summary of our discussion on each one of them. Webster City Community Theater requested $1,600. We recommend that you grant in full $1,600. The board liked the application and felt it was an event that the Hotel Motel was intended for. Webster City Women's Club requested $7,215. Recommend to grant the full $7,215. On this one, the board would like to see a little more advertising for the house and the future usage of the building. Ace Community Center requested $12,475. We recommend no funding for Ace Community Center. The board feels there are a lot of questions about the budget items, gray areas in the budget, and the board also feels this isn't the proper place for Hotel Motel monies to be used. Arts Are Alive requested $1,835. We recommend granting in full the $1,835. The board is pleased with the progress of the Arts Are Alive and the direction they're going to become more self-sufficient and bring in the data back to the board that we're requesting during the presentations. Briggs Woods Conference Center requested $50,000. We recommend granting in full the $50,000. Board members felt that this project could be big for the city. This would draw the most people and would be a continuing source of income for our hotels, thus providing more money for the Hotel Motel Board to grant money to other applicants. Building Possibility requested $4,000. We're recommending not funding them. The board felt due to the past actions, we would not like to risk our name on something that could become a negative for our city. We also felt this was something that didn't really fit the Hotel Motel intentions. Webster City Bad Men Club requested $1,750. We recommend granting $500. The board felt that this was a great project, but the advertising projections were high for the amount of people that it would be catering to. We would like them to come back with good reporting on stats of where the participants came from. If they use any businesses in Webster City in any data that would help the Hotel Motel Board in the future, we'd like to see this grow and urge them to come back again if this event is successful. Wilson Brew requested $16,619.20. We recommend granting them in full. The board would like them to start collecting some zip codes, including data from the visitors, and put that into the report at the presentation next year. Fort Regret Archery Club requested $4,175. We recommend granting them in full. The board agreed that state tournaments coming up at the trailer with a club name on the side would present a more professional club and increase the chances of the state shoots being hosted by the club in town. Trailer needs to be titled in the organization's name. The board would also like to see some more marketing from the club and stats for marketing in the future. The board also approved the extension for Briggs Woods from round 18 of the $25,000. So in conclusion, we had a balance of $1,029,157.35. Total requested was $99,669.20, and we recommend granting awards totaling $81,944.20, leaving the balance of $47,213.15. Any questions?
I have two questions, if I may. And everybody knows me, very well knows I'm not a PC individual, but Webster City, the women's club of Webster City. Now, is that a situation where we're getting into exclusion to the male gender? I'm just asking a question because it's a women's club.
Well, the women's club just takes care of the building, so it's not just for them. From what we were told, you can reserve the room. Any group could go reserve the room. And that's part of the marketing thing that we're in, the usage of the building. That's what we were asking for, a little more details and a little more marketing for that. But any of us in any of our groups, if we wanted to use it for a birthday or graduation party, we were told that you could go and reserve that room.
That's first I knew that was available. Then secondly, on the Briggs Woods, they got $25,000 a year ago. Is that correct?
Yep. And now we're... We just did the extension.
And now we're gonna give them $50,000?
We feel that granting them that amount of money will help them succeed with their project, thus bringing maybe more hotels or motels into town. And then that would help us out in the end and also help Webster City out with them bringing customers into town.
When's your extension?
I believe it's fall October, I believe. This year? Is that it? Eighteen?
And looking at all of our applications, I've only been on for two rounds, but for last round and this round, the project that really stood out as having long-term potential to continually bring people overnight to Webster City was that project and hopefully continue to fill our hotels.
But another question, the Border Brigade Archery Club now, they have brought like 100 shooters in a couple of times a year, haven't they? Is anybody here from the Border Brigade?
I believe from the grant, they had, was it two meets?
They have three meets this year.
They have three meets this year and they have two, I think they had two last year.
So they have a lot of heads and events in it?
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's all the questions I had.
Why did one of the board members abstain from voting or can you not say? On a... I can't remember which one it was now.
It was... The bad men one. I'm not sure. I can't answer that.
I think from past meetings you guys had, I think the issues we've had before where you guys weren't comfortable with what they were asking for, the way they were asking, I think everybody listened to that and you guys had much better candidates this time around.
Yeah, the applications were good and they're going in the right direction of what we would like to see as a board.
I appreciate the board's work on this. We rely on you heavily to vet the applications and also keep a healthy balance for future opportunities. So I think you've done both and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I too compliment you. I just had the questions, so I wanted to get those answered, so I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you've done a great job. I thank you very much. And I think you're correct. I mean, the... It seems a lot of money, the $50,000, but it is the purest form of, really when you look at it, it's absolutely the... Hotel Motel Tax fits right into what they're doing, so. Thanks very much. I guess we'll call for a motion.
I move to approve the recommendations.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you. Item two on the agenda is a motion to accept planning and zoning commission minutes of December 11th, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion approved. I suppose I should have asked whether we're going to do all those collectively.
I think since Logan wrote that...
So a recommendation is...
Is quite...
No, man.
Sorry about that. Item three is a resolution setting a time and place for a public hearing on proposed rezoning of property from R1 single-family dwelling and R2 multifamily dwelling district to C3 highway commercial. District said property being located in an area west of Superior Street and north of Fair Meadow Drive for January 15th at 5:30 PM.
This would be the public hearing following up on the PMZ's last meeting from last week regarding QuickStar's request to rezone the property. It's currently zoned three different zoning categories, including commercial on one corner and the other two being a form of residential. The area is between the dentist's office and Webster City Financial Bank off of Fair Meadow between Des Moines and Superior Street. So the recommendation would be considered at the public hearing at that time.
Will this design be available for the public to come in and look at it?
Yes.
I mean, you show me in your office.
Yeah.
Is there a place where they can actually come in and look at it and ask questions?
If they have questions, we can just show them this one or also print out what QuickStar site plans would be as well.
You're talking prior to that hearing date.
Yeah, I mean, so they have an idea what they're looking at, yeah.
I think it's important too for the public to be able to really get their arms around what QuickStar is proposing and what the recommendation is from the planning and zoning. To really understand what changes may occur and to know what is the current proposal. Because again, there's a lot of stories from where it originated to where it is today is vastly different. And it'd be good to get that information out there. I don't know if now is a good time to do like bullets or should we just wait to the hearing?
It'd be, you probably have to be best to wait to the hearing.
Sure.
That's the purpose of that public hearing. Anyone that has questions or general information, more than welcome to come in and obtain copies of those.
Would you like to come out?
Yeah, I would. I realize that we're gonna have a hearing coming up, but... My name's Cameron Victoria and my wife and I have been residents here in Webster City for over 15 years. And I'm actually probably leaning toward QuickStar. I actually think that competition is good. I'd like to think that the other truck stuff might be, if QuickStar comes in, might be willing to step up their game, which would be good for Webster City as well. But I will tell you, I do have some concerns about the proposal in that increased traffic, the detrimental effect to the road, noise, and trash. Now, I'm sure that QuickStar is going to hopefully address that, but I'd like to see more than just lip service. I'd like to see that there be some kind of firm legal documentation that they will indeed address that. And I also have a concern too, and it's not showing up on this and maybe it'll be talked about at the upcoming meeting, but traffic coming in on 17, off of 17 on the Fair Meadow. I assume the traffic coming in is gonna come in this way. So is it gonna come out that way as well or are we gonna look at exiting on the north side of the property? And that would be possibly, possibly a better alternative than having the traffic come in and out on Fair Meadow. So again, my concern about trash, noise, the detrimental effect on the roads, and putting some bite into any kind of documentation that they will indeed enforce, those kinds of things. We already have trash problem with, dare I say, Mickey D and some of the other businesses along Fair Meadow. And I'd like to think that with QuickStar coming in, that we could address this ahead of time. But again, I'm not against QuickStar. I just want to make sure that the public knows what is taking place. And I think it's important to do more than just putting a schematic like this in the paper because this doesn't reproduce well in the paper. It is very, very difficult to make any heads or tails of this. When the city was looking at doing the bike trail, I had to come down to City Hall and that's just the bike trail. That's just one little bike trail. I had to come down to City Hall to kind of basically figure out what was going on there. So do your homework and help the city and the residents really understand this because they really need to be behind this so that we can fully support it. But again, I'm leaning toward that, but please do your job. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, call for motion?
Two. Second.
All those in favor... Yeah, this is just to set time for public hearing. Nothing else, just setting time for public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion approved. Item four is a motion approving proclamation by mayor for Arbor Day in Webster City on April 27th, 2018. Kent, did you wanna say anything or?
I can if you want me to.
I guess you can. I realize we're just setting a time, so we have...
This proclamation, it used to be automatically renewed for the Fourth Friday of April, but one of the standards or requirements to qualify as a TreeCityUSA is to set it each year, have a mayor's proclamation. We've been doing this since 2000 and the nice thing about this is once we, as a TreeCity community, we're able to get grants and other funds to be able to plant trees and we're hoping to do that again this next year. In one of the couple areas, I think we're gonna look at the reforestation area instead of the Boone River. Next year, we're looking at Kenleyam Park in the lower area. We've had an oak disease take some of the trees out. So we're looking at that and then a few with the parks as well as the new trail and the new boulevard that empties out in the beach street. And in fact, this afternoon, I talked to Todd Lovas and future property owners, potential property owners, about planting trees in the right-of-way areas there too, so I think that'll look really nice.
While we're on the topic of trees, there's quite a beaver issue down there by the trail, right? Like I've noticed you fenced around some trees and stuff as well. Any headway on that or any?
We've been working with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources to work at ways to not encourage them to be around there anymore, so.
Again, this is a great proclamation. I bring up a beaver issue, which is I felt it was prevalent.
And for the property owners that are adjacent on the south side of the creek, we always recommend for them to protect their trees, you know, with either some type of hardware cloth or mesh fencing or even there's some, you can extend some molasses with some cayenne pepper and the beavers don't like that at all, so.
Is DNR live trapping those?
Uh, no.
Yeah. Thanks, Kent.
Thank you.
Okay, call for a motion to, for the proclamation?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion approved. Item five is a second reading of opposed ordinance and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Webster City, Iowa, 1996 by amending paragraphs 1, 2, 3, 5, 6 of chapter 69, section 09 pertaining to all-night parking prohibited.
This is the second reading of the ordinance that applies to the parking lots mainly in the downtown the city owns. We've gone through with the traffic committee and internal with staff to look at the different parking lots and identify and properly sign and/or change the wording in the ordinance to conform with more acceptable language. The, for instance, this is the fire department area, so Seneca and Bank Street. The dash lines here, these would accommodate overnight parking. The area inside the fire station, that's only for fire department personnel. The area on Seneca Street across from the saloon, those would be no parking zones from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. The 500 block of First Street. So again, the white shaded, the white areas would be 2:00, no parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. The strike areas, which generally are gonna be in the back slots in the parking lot. Those would be overnight. The Second Street, the north side of Second Street, 500 block. So behind the appliance store and the First State Bank. So the middle section would be no parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM as well as the right side of that back row. Everything from there to the west would be permitted to have overnight parking. Part of the reason why we wanted to ensure to have overnight parking was to ensure some of the, both the residences that live in the upper stories in the downtown as well as some of the patrons and some of our local drinking establishments. This would be the 600 block of First Street, the south side of 600 block. Again, the west row would be overnight and the east row would be permit only for some of the residents in specific apartment buildings. This would be the 700 block of Second Street, the north side. So the back row closer to pagel windows, those would be permitted overnight parking. The middle row again would be no parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. The reason for 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, particularly in the winter months, is also to accommodate snow removal. Usually our snowplows start getting out as early as 3:00 AM. It's a little difficult when cars are in the way. I believe those are the major areas, so this would be the second reading of that.
Daniel, point of clarification. Somebody asked me about that overnight parking. Are there provisions for people, you know, a lot of times I'll move a car in and they start working on it there and it's not movable? Are the police gonna chalk and see if they're moving every 24 hours?
That, we don't address it as part of the parking ordinance. That would probably be more so under our nuisance ordinance, so.
That was just a question somebody brought up to me, so I thought, thank you.
Again, I'm encouraged to see this become a thing and again encourages people to make the right choice. And I appreciate the traffic's committee work on it and city staffs.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign.
I move to waive the third reading.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion approved.
I move to pass and adopt.
Second.
You okay over there?
We're going, we're going, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion approved. Item six is a second reading of opposed ordinance and ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Webster City, 1996 by amending chapter 171, title 6, Hotel Motel Tax. This is, did you wanna brush on that, Carol?
It's to the people for a vote. We knew this because it expires December 31st of this year and it passed. So we need to change the ordinance to reflect the wording of what was on the ballot for what it's to be used for and for the new dates of starting January 1st of 18 for 10 years. And if there's no objections, I'd like you to waive the third reading and pass and adopt so it can be in place by the first of the year.
And to refresh everyone's memory, they voted on this on the presidential election in 2016 or 17 or 18. Oh my gosh.
16 days.
It was that long ago. But yeah, so it was on our local ballot, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign.
I move to waive the third reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved.
Cool.
I move to pass and adopt.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Item seven on the agenda is a first reading of opposed ordinance, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Webster City, nineteen ninety-six, by amending paragraph one and paragraph three to chapter sixty-nine, section zero-eight pertaining to no parking zones. Ken wants to get up. Oh, Ken wants to start this one.
I think you had an opportunity to take a look at the memo that was written and also to see the pictures that depict what signage is currently there. Uh, if you take a look at the signage, uh, it's nowhere near what the municipal code states that it should say. So, uh, what came to our attention was, if you are at a high school event and you are at the football field for that event, you cannot get, uh, a vehicle down Bank Street to West Avenue in any shape or form, let alone trying to get a, a normal vehicle, which would be a car down that area. So we had a long, uh, conversations with superintendent schools, Mike Sherwood, um, chief of police and fire chief and the superintendent that takes care of the bus barns or bus travel. So, in all those discussions, it was, uh, arrived at the best solution would be to allow parking on the south side of Bank Street and eliminate parking on the north side. Reason for that being twofold. One, getting the buses in and out of the high school parking lot. You can't accomplish that if you have vehicles parked on the north side of that street. Uh, the other thing that was, uh, made concern was, if you have vehicles parked on the north side for a school event, those pedestrians are crossing that street and you are putting them in potential conflict with a vehicle. So to eliminate that altogether, um, it would be best to put the parking on the south side. Also, if you look at Bank Street itself, most of the Bank Street has the sidewalk on the south side. So, with those things in mind, that's why we're thinking to allow parking on the south side and prohibit parking on the north side. Any questions?
Let's fairly strike forward.
You're saying now it's allowed on the south side, but all those cars are parked on the north side in that picture, right?
Right, it's prohibited on the south side.
Okay.
It's prohibited now on the south side and supposed, and by the municipal code, and the north side. So, when you go to a event at the football field, baseball diamonds, uh, you watch those people park, they're parking up on the parking, they're driving, you know, which, and the handicap parking stalls are on the south side, right on that corner. So, you, you have to allow them to park someplace, or they need that privilege to park somewhere close by, because that's where the handicap parking is. Well, that's all on the south side, leave it there.
Yeah, I was just at Russell meet the other night, and it was definitely tight parking up there, so this will help all that.
Thanks, Ken. Anyone else have any questions? Call for motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Item eight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an election to participate and release pursuant to the consent order entered into by the Iowa Insurance Division and Mutual Medical Insurance Services, LLC. Daniel, yours.
Uh, a couple months ago, you recall that, uh, the council approved a, a, um, a similar matter with regarding our insurance coverage with, um, that we use for our, our city employee benefits. This is just a follow-up to the matter with a second party involved. Um, they were, um, wait to my screen. The first matter was with Two Rivers. They had settled with a, a number of communities at the time. We agreed to, agreed to that settlement in part just because we hadn't been with them for a long time. So, some were considering, uh, appealing it, fighting it, but, um, they weren't hoping to get very much. We were in a similar situation, and we, we received under ten thousand dollars. This is a, a separate party that was involved with that whole issue of whether or not premiums or certain charges were, were pointed out in typical billing as premiums, or whether they were separated out, so. Um, just a little more money for us to put back in our, our employee benefits funds.
Anyone have any questions? No? Nice to get five thousand dollars back, I guess. Yeah. Um, okay, call for motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Item nine is a resolution of support and commitment of funds for Green Stream Homes of Iowa, LLC, Urbendale, Iowa.
Um, I'm doing it, let me just pull it, yeah, I can just pull up my map. We've been approached by a developer that's, um, has been working with, um, property owners of the parcel just behind the hospital. Hospital's right here, this, all this piece of land here. He's been talking to the property owner, it's owned by Bob Van Deest. Uh, he's, as my understanding, entered into a, a contract, uh, with the, with Mr. Van Deest to acquire the property, um, pending approval of, of his plans and being able to move forward with, uh, his plans to construct, um, an independent living as well as an apartment complex. Um, this is a drawing or rendering of what he has in mind to be able to accommodate that. So I believe thirty units is for one and thirty-two units for the other. Um, he's seeking to apply for workforce tax credits with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Um, he understands that's, that's a highly competitive process, but wanted to pursue it either way. Uh, it's our understanding that he still intends to continue to look forward and move forward with the project, um, even if those don't come through. But, um, he is, he is looking at every avenue in terms of, uh, trying to assist him in financing this project. Some of the floor plans he has in mind. This is one example of a unit that's, uh, under nine hundred square feet, that's, uh, for two bedroom and a living room area. Um, his idea would be to first construct on the top ten acres, um, two of the structures, two of the buildings, and, and currently working with, um, Rankin Engineering, on developing the site plan to auto move forward with both submitting to the state for the workforce tax credits, as well as submitting to us to review and eventually approve. He is, will be requesting, once he has his ducks in a row, um, will likely be requesting assistance from the city in the form of, uh, urban renewal area to, um, take advantage of tax improvement financing for that project.
Can I ask a question about that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, can you come up to the, come up the podium and state your name and address?
Another question. Sure. There's just been a rumor.
Can you, can you?
My name is Tony Harland.
Okay, what address?
Six fifteen East Second Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, there's a rumor going around, first off, I thought that Sabashon that property, is that, that's owned by Van Deest?
It's owned by Van Deest.
Okay. Somebody had mentioned, and it's actually spreading through the entire hospital, actually, that that property is looking to be purchased and turned into a city sewage facility? Is that completely rumored?
Yeah, well, you're in the wrong area.
Just south of that.
It's, it's, we're on the other side, we're on the other side of the interstate. On the other side of Highway twenty.
It's over there?
Yes.
Is that owned by Sabashon?
Yes.
Because they told me it's right by, uh, by Centennial.
Yeah.
So they're totally confused. That's where it's going, right there?
The sewer plant's gonna roll right down, get where that, where that hand is right now, so.
I will make sure I clear that up with that.
Appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you very much.
That was an easy one for...
Yeah, I knew it.
In their defense, they were too far away.
True.
Just a fairly big, fairly big problem.
Difference, yeah.
The, the current one is closer to the hospital than the new one will be.
No, that would have been so bad. So I'm sort of, everyone's...
Yeah, we can't, we cannot build one within, that's why, one of the reasons why we had to be that far away out of town.
Gotcha. So is the proposed entrance for this gonna be off of the side road? Or is it gonna be a new driveway brought in by the hospital?
Uh, it kind of depends on the developer, on their final plan, at least. My understanding is they're looking for the first phase, which would be the top portion, as I mentioned, to extend Fair Meadow, um, and likely connect to Edgewood Drive.
So go around the clinic?
Right.
And this will not be common, this would be assisted living, elder living, right?
Yeah, it's...
All, both of them?
His focus would be for, um, senior, older populations.
And there's three stories?
He put out one later, so.
Got you.
All right.
Is that the lot that was supposed to go for the housing for the...
For the other, the other guy?
Sixty unit apartment complex. It was in the same vicinity and, and part of the same lot, but, uh, uh, they were just gonna be the, pretty much this corner that they had in mind. Um, this developer's looking to acquire all of it and be, and develop it over time. The reason why, the, on the, on the action for the council, um, he has two separate entities. One for the apartment complex, which is more, gonna be market rate, and the other entity is for the, the, more like the senior living center with, uh, um, dining facility and that sort of amenities.
So what's the commitment of funds involved?
So for the Iowa workforce tax credit, um, let, uh, support, um, and if awarded, um, commitment from the, the community or the city of a thousand dollars per, per residential unit.
How many units?
Thirty. Thirty?
Thirty-two. Sixty-two dollars.
It could be sixty units, yeah, if you built by buildings.
Does he get this up on completion or to get started, or?
No, on completion. Yeah, the, the...
And I owe you.
Yeah, and that's subject to the, the rules of the state, so I mean, it'll kind of be, he'd have to enter into agreement if it's awarded with them and, and work through all their requirements.
All right. Anyone have any other questions? Okay. Call for motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Item ten is a resolution of support and commitment of funds for Kenyon Hill Ridge, LLC, of Urbendale, Iowa. This is obviously the other building or the...
I'll move to...
The other half of this business, so.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Um, item eleven is a council memorandum, resolution authorizing the sale of real estate and approved execution of a warranty deed conveying city-owned property in Borough Creek Estates, third addition, Webster City, to David Luke and Annette Luke. Um, this is finally getting that settled out, so.
Yes, this is, uh, council approving the warranty deed, um, for, with the Luke's for the parcel lot ten behind their current home. Um, the warranty deed is, uh, council just approved, so it can then be recorded and finalized. Um, we've executed the, an agreement, um, thus far, and this is the final step.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, item twelve is a resolution accepting work, consil, no. Reconciling bid tab and authorizing payment of sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents for retainage to Once Construction Incorporated of Green, Iowa, for completion of contract for the twenty seventeen water system improvement project.
Now, Ken, I recognize, I, the, answering specific questions you have. This is a, a finalize our projects, our water system improvement projects throughout the city, which included the Water Main Project on James Street and a couple of other, um, projects throughout town. Um, we've completed all those projects, and this is just a final step in approving the final payment.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Uh, item thirteen is a resolution establishing a nuisance at six fifteen East Second Street and ordering the abate thereof within thirty days. Where do you want to start with this one? We've got someone who...
You want me to talk about that?
Yes, come on up to the...
All right.
You won't have to do your name and address this year.
Sure?
Yeah?
I don't worry. My name's Tony Harland, just so you remember, and my address is that address. Uh, when I bought this property, about four years ago, I believe, uh, the kids and I absolutely fell in love with what you guys are calling a nuisance. And I'm sure there'll be pictures, yeah. Pretty much the only thing that you can, the only place that you can actually see this most of the year is if you're driving down Ice Street. Uh, during the summer and fall months, it's completely covered by, um, foliage. But I love this property. That house right there is over a hundred years old, and I currently use it for storage for wood. Uh, I have some very old wood that I, that was actually in there when we purchased the property, and it's actually what I was going to use to build a treehouse for the kids before I found the city ordinance of treehouses. And didn't think that was actually gonna end up working out, but, uh, I could actually end up moving the wood. Not a big deal. But the problem that I have with this property is that I'm getting this new extra-city nuisance, uh, thing that's been passed, and a lot of the, well, I don't know how many homes are actually being targeted as nuisances. This obviously isn't a home, it doesn't have a door, windows are all broken out. Um, but it's certainly not dangerous. Um, I'm in there a couple hundred times a year, and, um, kids love it. And I honestly just feel like I'm kind of being targeted because people think it's ugly. Um, it was brought to Elise's attention, somebody actually complained about it, that it was ugly. And so she sent me a letter from the city saying that I had to re-roof it or tear it down. And so I had five different companies bid the re-roofing, and the cheapest was forty-five hundred dollars. And I have a hard time justifying spending that much money on a building that doesn't even have a door or windows. But it is structurally sound, it is extremely safe, and, um, very useful to me. Um, right here, it is an estimate that I have from, um, a company here in town to tear it down. And I can proceed with that before the winter, should the city decide that that's what you guys want. There really isn't much that I can do to make it prettier, but, um, I'm just here to... I don't know, I think if everyone sat here and looked at this without me being here, everyone would have been like, ew, that's disgusting. But it's more than just a disgusting building to my, me and my family. Um, that I don't know... The, I don't know his last name, Jim Tree Service Jim, he, he grew up in the house, and, um, it's just really hard for me to tear down something that has that kind of a history, it's lots of fun to walk through, it's actually so small that I can, I can't walk through it without bending over, cause the ceilings, I think the people that lived there were under five foot their entire lives, because I can barely walk through there myself, but it's just such a cool house, and if you want me to tear it down, well, no problem, but I think there's a hundred homes in West City that are more noticeable and worse off than that, maybe not worse off as far as livable, but the problem that this nuisance thing is trying to target is make our city look nicer, and I think the, the streets that people drive on where there's homes that people see often need to be focused on a lot more than something that is obviously just a storage area, and that's just my opinion, but, um, I'm willing to tear it down, no problem.
You could spend the four and a half thousand dollars and just fix the roof on it.
I could.
And then you can, if the building, if it's a good building, you should keep it and just.
I should.
Tearing down's cheaper.
Tearing down's gonna help you three hundred bucks.
What is, what is that, the, the big pile of, is that a big?
Concrete, I don't even know what that is, oh, that, the, the wood?
Is that big pile way behind you, is that?
Are you talking about?
You're talking like, snow covered there?
Looks like snow, is it concrete, is it?
This is a.
No, no, not there, no, that's it, we can't see it now.
It's sort of right to a little bit.
If you go to the back, that last photo.
Straight, no.
Right there.
Right there.
Behind the pole.
Behind the pole.
Behind the pole?
Yeah.
Which says.
Oh, you can't really tell.
I actually think that's a hole going through, that's the sky, through the trees, uh, we own the ten acres, so we own everything.
Actually, that's a pile of debris and metal and wood and.
Oh, that's right.
It's like an old building.
That's an old house, that's Tom Brom's old house that we had to tear down. Um, I actually have been going over there, I'd say once a month, to be fair, uh, and filling up the back of my truck with debris. Um, that house was extremely dangerous, and, uh, mildew, mold, rotting, it was in really bad shape, so we tore it down, um, actually, when they were doing the Second Street project, we, uh, hired one of the construction workers that had a a big backhoe, just tore the house down, yeah, it's a big pile, the, right next to it is, is our garage, we're, we're actually using that. Um, but the house itself has been caved into itself, and I've gotten everything that I can with my hands. A lot of the other stuff is, um, either attached with carpet or a toilet, bathtub, stuff that I can't get myself. Need to get in there with a couple of friends and probably rent a giant dumpster, can't move everything into there.
I have a question, one, one of the pictures that popped up earlier, I think is the Google Earth image from the road, i- is, was this building, uh, exposed due to the road construction? Did they knock some trees down and it?
Yeah, they knocked down, well, they cut down most of these, a lot of these trees, all of these, most of these, and I actually had to talk to them about keeping some of the bigger ones, because I don't, I, they weren't in the way, but, um, yeah, they cut down a lot of the trees that were on the north side of the road to make room for, uh, the new roads. But yeah, that's what it looks like most of the year.
Well, unfortunately, if you've got, you know, if you've got a bad roof, it doesn't matter whether the building's lived in or whether it's your garage, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's definitely considered an unsafe building, so.
Okay.
Comes under the nuisance ordinance, but.
That's fine, that's not a big deal, I don't mind tearing it down.
And then, um, I'm not sure about that pile you've got in the back there, by all rights, you're probably, uh, did you get a building, uh, demolition permit to pull that down?
Nope.
Which case you're supposed to get.
Nope, probably shouldn't have.
Fill and fill and all the rest.
Yeah, I'm, uh, a little behind in.
So.
The rules of the city, but yeah, for sure, I apologize for not doing that, but I will, I'm gonna get a dumpster, I know we need to get a dumpster and get that stuff out of there.
But it mean, if you, if that building's as good as you, you think it is, I mean, I'd, you know, we might be better off trying to find a way to.
I know.
To get a roof on it.
We're moving very soon, so I'll get rid of everything while I can, um, well, I'll get rid of everything before we move, but um, fixing it up doesn't really, it's not a priority for me anymore, but I did wanna keep that house, but I can tear it down as well. No big deal, the only thing that'll be left over will be the garage, and that random concrete thing that's there, I don't know what he did with that.
Hmm, that's that, that's that concrete wall you were showing, that, that, um, the U shape.
I have no idea what he says, or what he's planning on doing, Tom was a brick mason in town, and.
Might have been gonna make a garage.
He's kind of, you can't really talk to Tom anymore, I think he's kind of a little out of it, so his daughters, when I talk too often, they don't know uh, what it was gonna be, maybe some kind of storage for a tractor, he did have a lot of, uh, older cars, I think he probably put it in there.
Is it just down through his house?
This is Tom's old house.
Okay.
This is the garage that was attached, or that was next to it, it's about a five foot walkway, and then this is the old, the old hundred year house, and then he built this here next to it, and then I actually had them, well, that's not important, but yeah, that's, that old house was, it was actually really bad, I wish you guys could have gone in there and smelled it. It's one of those places where you walk in and you feel like you need to just get out, because something bad's gonna happen to your lungs. So.
Okay.
That's that.
Anyone else have any questions for him?
No.
Alright, thank you.
Very much.
Do you want to do, no one has any more questions? Okay. I guess we'll call for a motion.
And what is, we're, we're motioning on moving forward?
Motion at the moment's to, uh, abatement thereof within thirty days, so.
So that means he has thirty days to take care of it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I do have another question, like, Tony, do you feel like you can take care of it within thirty days?
If he's not gonna do it in thirty days, I'll do it myself.
Okay.
It is a bad time of year.
I do have a demo.
If you're thinking of re-roofing it, I guess, you know, it's a bad time of year to do it, but.
Yeah, it's, it's.
A bad time of year to do anything now.
Don't wanna make the city mad, I'll tear it down, I have a chainsaw and a truck, no big deal.
Okay.
But I do need to get my demo permit, again, what, what's the time on that, when it expired, is it thirty days?
Expires after thirty days of getting the permit.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item fourteen is a resolution establishing a nuisance at two oh nine East Second Street and ordering the abatement thereof within thirty days.
Good evening, Scott Borbul, I've been living in this area for forty-seven years. Eastside Grocery Ground longer than I have, I grew up, uh, down the street from it, we bought it back in ninety-nine, I believe, and due to business conditions, no longer able to compete, uh, in that current situation as a grocery store. So I do see that needs to be updated, the roof needs to be done, we have some bids in, we cover overpriced, uh, nobody really wants to do the work right now. We have some of the siding already purchased, we'll have the second purchase of the siding on January fifteenth, uh, and we're gonna possibly look into opening, reopening that up as something else, so we are, uh, yeah. That actually goes to nothing, uh, it was, I think, more of a storage than anything. And this is where you could cook at right in here, we would put siding up, re-roof this, and re-roof this. This would be a shingles typical, this over here would be all steel roofing.
So how much time do you think you want to do?
Uh, weather permitting, bidding permitting, I mean, I'm looking for total completion and redoing it by March thirty-first, but it's up to the council and the weather, if the weather keeps up, great, right now, I'm busy at work, we are unusually warm right now, and I'm working about a hundred hours a week. It's structurally sound, obviously the roof's safe down.
Sir, are we talking the white building, red building, or both of them?
Both of them.
Yeah, hold it, this here, this here, this is the stockroom building, this is your basic work building.
Elise, I assume you've been in this?
I have not been inside the building in a long time.
Yeah, me neither, since like, the nineties.
Slow books.
I, I see there's been some extensions, Elise, is that correct?
There has been.
Okay, and possibly that extension was sent to my dad, who lives right down the street, I live in Dunkham, Iowa, I travel and I work, and I just got back to St. Louis probably a year and a half ago, so if I miss some of that, I just actually inform the, uh, city tax or whatever to send it to my address in Dunkham to get everything up to date, so obviously I was missing some of this as well.
So you, you, you feel that to get it up to speed to the city standards, we're looking at March of eighteen?
Yes, I am, I, I, I'm talking, I'm, because I wanna redo more than just that, I guess, maybe that's a better way to say it.
Sure.
I got a, a guy that wants to start, uh, smoking some of his own meats in there and opening that up as a business, I won't be, I work too much, but that's what he wants to do.
I'll give you a little history, I mean, I, uh, a grandmother of, of mine, uh, was a previous owner of this establishment, so I, I hate to see it get to this.
Doors?
Uh, Sue.
Okay.
That's my grandmother, Sue Welch, previously, um, but, uh, I, I hate to see it in this condition, uh, I, I would like to see it reused for something. Um, I'm just hopeful that, uh, you know, if we, if we do give you an extension, that's, it's obtainable.
Sure.
So we're not back here in, uh, March or April, and it's, it's even worse, or sometimes we see them like halfway through construction, you know?
Sure.
And they just kinda hit a stop, run out of money or something, so.
If you want, if the police, the, the council here, if they want some updates when it gets warmer, I have no problem, we're gonna have you guys come in. I mean, you just, I'll, I'll work with him, I'd rather see it open myself, I grew up with it.
Yeah, I hear that, um, I just, it just concerns me in the condition it's in currently, um, you know, if, if Elise is telling us it's unsafe and there's been extensions, I, I, I don't feel we can extend it to day, but if, I, I feel if you start working on it, obviously you're gonna avoid the, um, issues in the future, um, cause you have thirty days from today to be compliant, correct?
Yes.
So.
What is compliant, I mean, you're talking about doing the whole roof, because I don't have a lot of people wanting to go up there and, and aware of the conditions and putting it on, and like I said, I've got two bids that were a little outrageous, I've got lawyers I'm looking to and another construction company, but.
Well, I understand your concerns as of, you know, December, whatever is the date, eighteenth, I understand that there'd be concerns going into a cold season, but this was discussed back in the fall, and, and, and those concerns might not have been as great if it was acted upon when it first became a nuisance property. Scott, I have empathy for your situation, and I wanna see that building stay, I just can't see it being extended to March. Um, I just, where I'm at, I wanna make sure action's taken, is all, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get into here, so. Um, I don't know what the other council members wanna chime in on, but that's.
Well, I have, uh, two comments on that, one, that place used to have the coldest beer in town many, many years ago, and I do remember that, so that's why. Some of the best tenor ones, too.
I agree.
And, uh, I guess, uh, this is my opinion, and I would have to defer to Elise, but, uh, I like to see, you know, if you're gonna do the work, I'd like to see us work with you.
That would be awesome.
That's my opinion, but I'm only one of five, please understand.
Sure.
But, uh, you know, I'm with Logan, I mean, I just remember that place from bygone years, and I guess I honestly drive a lot around West City, I didn't know it was that, uh, rundown, I just didn't really pay that much attention, you know, when I looked at it, I mean, uh.
Like I said, when I was traveling, everything else, and across the US here, not a lot of time spent, it's storage right now, that's, it's not open for business, nothing there for that.
Yeah, but, no, I, you know, I mean, from my perspective, if there's any ways you could work it, I would certainly like to do it, because, now, I'm speaking for myself, you know, I mean, this first I've seen of this, but, I mean, uh, and I'm not gonna, uh, undermine Elise, because she's done a tremendous job since she's been at the council, I mean, on, with the city. On, you know, getting a lot of priorities, but, um, typically, you know, if they work with her, but that's my opinion on that.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll back in that, Jim, too, I definitely wanna work with you on this, I, I'd hate to see that building ever come down or fall down on its own, um, and I'm all for, you know, recycling a building or making it into something else, um, I'm all for that, um, I understand if we're going into the winter months, it just, it, it needs to happen sooner than later.
Okay. So has contact, communication been difficult, Elise?
You know, I actually called Don, his dad, directly to make sure that thi- this was getting through, and, and Don was the one who actually requested the extensions, so we've been communicating back and forth, I've just got to the end of my ability to offer extensions, especially with no improvements done.
So the communication loop has not been broken?
No, I, I've been in communication with Don on a regular basis.
Three, that's good.
I guess the problem is, we had to come up with a solution with that, I mean, I haven't had a problem with giving more time, the only problem is that we give it three months and then nothing happens, it's, then we're back here again.
If you guys don't see progress in three months, I'm more happy to do something else, but that's what I can do and will do, because that's just how I am. I've got six cool doors down there, I got an ice machine, I mean, I've got a small kitchen in there, it's gonna take some work and time and effort, but that's what we can do.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay, I personally wanted to see something become of it, and, um, how we do it is what I'm about, so.
So you wanna change it to ninety days, we'll leave it the same, we'll do abatement thereof within ninety days.
We'll move forward with the ninety day window?
Yeah.
I'm gonna do that.
But I think the one caveat, we'd want you updating Elise all the time, I mean, on a periodic basis, to be determined by YouTube, I mean, that's not.
Elise, this is my contact, information right there, being my cell phone, obviously, just keep trying, cause.
Call for a motion with that, I think.
No, I, I think that's a good compromise, it, it, it moves forward with the abatement, so you know we're moving forward with it, right, and not, not starts the clock. Uh, just the clocks sit around a little longer for you, and hopefully, you know, we get some headway, and we have a mild winter and we get some, some, some stuff done, so.
I hope to have some fun with the Boone River right there, too, as well, so I, I think it's the necessary time for it, it's just hard to focus when I've been everywhere. I'm just finally back in Iowa, getting my feet grounded again.
Fair enough.
Done, thank you.
So I need to move to proceed with.
We need a resolution within amended ninety days.
An amend, yeah. To, to amandering it, to ordering the abatement thereof within ninety days.
So so moved what John said.
So you're making a motion that the resolution establishing a nuisance at two oh nine East Second Street and ordering the abatement thereof within ninety days?
Yes.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item fifteen is to set a time and place, uh, and maybe even an idea for the town hall meeting, what? Start thinking about what you might wanna talk about at the town hall meeting, or? Uh, with what month are you thinking?
January, we, I think last year we had it at the end of January coming up the station. We're gonna busy, we're busy, it isn't beginning of January.
We got the Tuesday meeting, right, the second, is that right?
The second and the fourth.
Fourth.
Or the, yep, the goal setting.
And the fifteenth.
Gosh, I wish we could do it before the goal setting meeting. Now, may, maybe it's good to do right after to relay, but it's good to know what the feel of the community is before we set goals.
There's five Mondays in January.
I think we need to make sure we get some good content, last time was, we didn't have much to go with.
Well, I'm sure.
I'm as guilty of that as anything else, but.
I'm sure Quick Star would be a topic, you know, we could inform people kinda what the plan is, or what, you know, the layouts are, it'd be a good forum to discuss that. It also happened probably in between the two hearings, two to three hearings, right, is we set the date and time for the fifteenth, is that when we set the date and time, right?
Yeah.
So if we did it like, either the eighth or the twenty-second, it would be pretty, you know, I guess, fresh in people's minds.
Both those dates work for me.
And they would be after the goal setting meeting, so we can relay kinda what some of the goals are for the community going into the next year.
You won't have the, the official.
Right.
Report back.
Right.
From the goal setting by the eighth, I don't believe, but.
But we can relay, I mean, what's discussed and some of our ideas, right, we just can't say they're officially voted on yet. Is that correct, am I speaking online? Cause it's technically, it's not a closed meeting, is it?
No.
Nah. I, so twenty-second to give them some time?
And by then, the.
Yeah, cause we're gonna, we're gonna run it, Tommy, pretty quick to try and hook them up with our ideas. You guys do have.
You guys do have five Mondays in the month of January, if you guys are willing.
I was, twenty-second or twenty-ninth?
What matter to me, the twenty-ninth's a chamber dinner. But twenty-second? I'm pretty sure it was the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, it's the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
So it's not the twenty-ninth?
Everybody will count the twenty-second?
Can't beat the twenty-ninth.
And it's a public meeting too. You just ask if it was. The goal setting. Yeah, it is, yeah, that's what.
So January twenty-second, what time do you wanna?
Seven o'clock, so we normally do it, isn't it? The middle school.
Okay, try to get the middle school then?
Possible, I guess that's probably gonna be our first thing if we can get that rip venue.
Maybe it'd be a good thing, you know, for the press to relay, like, you know, we're, we're seeking ideas or, or seeking topics for our town hall, so if you have any, please contact, you know, city hall or, or member of the council or whoever, like to relay those on, because we kind of, we, we kinda throw darts to the wall, you know, we, we think people just wanna hear the projects we're working on or the, kinda what's going, coming out of the pipe, but we can be way off, so if, if people have ideas, please bring them to us.
I do have one idea, a week ago, last Friday, I was at a meeting, Daniel was there, it was the chief of police from Storm Lake, wasn't Daniel?
Yes.
Was there, and he was talking about cultural assimilation, you were there also. And, you know, they talked about a lot of different things, but supposedly, well, how many, twenty-nine diverse groups or something like that? And I had made the suggestion, you know, that we look at the town hall meetings and everybody's wanting to know how we can reach out, I mean, it goes two ways, but the thing is, I suggested that each person in that room bring a couple of different people and see what they would do, and if we're talking to these diverse groups, and invite them and see what their feeling is on it. And I mean, there was a lot of things that were brought up, I think the chief, was that Daniel mentioned about the potlucks and supplying the food? I mean, there was things, you know, that, you know, I'm not aware of, and I think, you know, if they're reaching out and looking at this type of situation, that might be an idea. But I mean, that's just an idea, I don't know.
That's a great idea, Jim, I mean.
Naturally, I thought of it.
No, I mean, it really is, we, we had a second meeting just the other day, you know, kinda kicking around some of the same ideas and see if we wanna move forward with the diversity, like coalition or like an ad hoc little group, to, to find ways to better that, that bond with the different cultures and, and not even just cultures, but age groups even, within the community. And, and you're right, we keep racking our brains trying to think what they want, why don't we just invite them to table and tell us?
But you know, I mean, I looked around that room, that meeting I was in, and with the exception of two young ladies, everybody in there was angry. I mean, and.
There was one male there too.
Oh, yeah, why, I'm sorry, Daniel, sure, yeah, no.
I wasn't meaning included as a man.
No, but I mean, you know, you were there for the city, but I mean, what I'm saying, there was three folks there that, well, then Tommy, Daniel, but you know, these are the folks that, you know, we're trying to reach out to, but what do they want? I guess that's the question, because I can't think for somebody else.
I like your idea too of, of bringing somebody with you, you know, like everybody goes to town hall, I can invite a neighbor, a friend, whoever, that's great.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
I might get something started, yeah, the middle school's available, but it'd be the only thing that might change here.
Be an issue.
Yeah. Item D is reports, recommendations of officers, boards and commissions. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered its normal sequence on the agenda. Item one is a motion to accept the financial November reports, finance, treasury report, bankruptcy reconciliation report, investment summary, FSB ICS savings seven ninety-one, public fund account, and FSB statement. Item two is a, is a motion to accept city manager November reports on electric wastewater, water, electric year-to-date and water year-to-date. And code enforcement is item three, motion to accept police department's November report, and four is a motion to accept the fire department's November report. How would you like them?
Move to approve collectively?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Are there any other committee reports?
Uh, just give a, a two second update on the youth advisory commission. They, they wanna move forward with a frothing tournament still, I mentioned it, I think a couple of meetings ago. More to come on that, they're kicking around some dates in June, pretty excited about it, they'll come and formally request help from the city to kinda use a park and organize that in the future, but that's where their heads at, that's their mission right now and more to come.
Any other? Got any other reports? I guess we'll be, we're going into closed session, to meet in closed session to discuss the purchase, sale of particular real estate. Only where premature disclosure could be reason, reasonably expected to increase the price of the governmental, to the government body and would have to pay for that property as provided by chapter twenty-one point five J of the Code of Iowa. So with that, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Some moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Five minute break.
Five minute break, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Hey, good luck.